Hello everybody and welcome back to another Mooncolony livestream, it's nice to see you all. It feels strange being here on a Monday, but here we are. So I hope everybody had an amazing weekend and you're ready to kind of jump in to to a new week, but I think it's a good, it's a good thing to start with. Starting with some studies this week, it'll be nice and relaxing. So we've grabbed Melissa, how are you doing Melissa?
I'm doing fine, so this is not my fault, this is Jayden Alexandro's fault, they make me do bugs. So in a Discord you will find this file with the with the references, these are I think copyright free references for your use. I organized them in small groups, don't catch me, this is not probably correct, I some grouped however I thought would be feel best. So we are practicing bugs today, I don't like bugs in particular. Sometimes people say they would see me scream if the bug touches me. But I find some really nice to draw and paint and I picked some interesting ones. They say this is cicada, I'm not sure because I know cicada like this. Those are interesting things to draw, beetles are always fun. The cute one, normal one, because you would see this one even for a second you would think that, how you call little bird in English?
Oh, like a hummingbird?
Hummingbird, yeah. And then, those are not bugs, but I think we could draw something of this, Mr. Krabi. Because they have these juicy eyes, red claws, it looks so good. If you hate bugs though, you can get today just by drawing something else, I provided these two. But this is study stream, so I would encourage you to draw together. It doesn't have to be bugs though, if you feel uncomfortable. How I overcome my fear of spiders a tiny bit, because I would before scream, at least now I can hit them, is by drawing cute little ones or interesting ones or having them on the background of my phone. This one even looks cool, it looks like a snow spider.
Yeah, really cool.
So you can draw that, the praying mantis have a character, because they always make funny faces. Like, look at this one, what you have, what you get up there? Or this one, pure creep.
I learned that, I learned that those black spots aren't actually their pupils.
No, but they move.
Yeah, they move depending on where you look at them from.
Yeah, I think they have a bunch of tiny, tiny eyes.
I don't, I don't remember, I think it's something to do with I think it's something to do with the way that their eyes like take in light. So wherever you look at them from, it looks like the pupil is there when it's not, it's weird.
Some of these photos are nice with the lightning, like this one is really nice, it got subsurface scattering. Where's the grasshopper? Yeah, this grasshopper is really good for practice for gently drawing the shadows, if you can see this. It got subsurface scattering, bounce light, it never goes too dark. But I would advise you to first do the background, which is much darker and desaturated, because only then you can focus how much of the dark green you wanna use here and how much of the bright. This, well this is just unfortunate, this one I don't like, it makes awful signs when you touch it. By mistake, but it's so interesting because it looks like it's made of mechanical parts. And when you start drawing, you start learning so much without, because it's without the texture. You start learning how it connects, I mean, the crab is probably the best to see how some parts mechanically connect. Again, not same group of animals, I just said this is like looking like a bug, it's not all bugs. But it got similar looking parts. This one I put like, it's got really nice background, so it doesn't have to be bug. But if you're in need of the background for something like micro creature, sometimes the best references are the Essex photography. Because then you can use, use them for the reference. What else? I think I said what I wanted to say now, pick one. I will be scribbling this stream and maybe start coloring a bit. It's nice when you have patterns like this to see how the legs work, I mean, I will try to make everything bit chunkier, bit cuter. And if it got hairs, the hair is gonna be a bit thicker, because the hair is usually what creeps me out on the spiders. Those need to be shaved.
I, I just, for me a lot of the time it's, it's the mouths. I don't know why, their mouths creep me out.
Because of this, where was this one? They have four or more outside pincers.
Yeah.
They don't have lips.
Yeah.
Look at this. Those cicadas at least are good, many bugs, I don't know about cicadas, maybe I forgot. Many bugs that go from living in ground for years, then from cocoon to big one. Some of them don't even have mouth. They're just there to make an eggs and die off. Oh, this is fun one, like the whole story is here. The easiest and cutest one is the beetle and you know what, as I'm big fan of the hollow knight, the stuck beetle you use for trash travel is probably my favorite bug.
Yeah, it's really cute.
It saves you a lot of running around, this one got really great colors. So I picked the free for use photographs. There are many more interesting ones. On the, on the some bugs you will see changes on hues and how lights interact and different materials. Some are shiny, some are looking like juicy and some are hard shell. So that's also interesting to practice on. And depending on the lightning and surrounding, they look different. So that's what I pay attention to, or if you want to draw something pretty, try, try to make them bit prettier than they are, I don't see always the beauty in the bugs.
Yeah, I struggle with that too.
Why did you make me then?
I don't know. Maybe, maybe I wanna conquer some fears too.
I started just practicing with bit of mantis, like warming up. I started doing the weird grasshopper with the humback. The crab is probably my favorite, I will draw another one and I did this one now. So I'll just continue scribbling stuff, which one I can start now. Maybe, this grasshopper is already done, it's cute. Maybe just switch colors a bit, I don't know what this is, I'm not sure.
I have no idea.
Let's just draw a simple, simple grasshopper first.
Yeah, and if anyone, as always, if anyone has any questions as we go along, feel free to drop them in the chat and we can, we can discuss them. Bro, did you just run an ad on me? I did not, if Twitch decided to put an ad on, then that is not, that's not on me. I technically turned off mid-roll ads, so it shouldn't be playing ads for you, but...
Alex got ads in Bulgaria, you're advanced, we don't get those on Twitch.
But I will, I'll say some hellos, so hello Sinistral, hello YagiJ, hi Alan, hi both Cassies. Love the sound, yeah, I'm trying out a different playlist today. Hopefully it's, hopefully it's a bit, a bit nicer. Let me know if it's still too loud or if it's too quiet and I can play around with the, with the volume a little bit. It seems to sound different for me than it does for you, so... Random one, how does any, how do you gain permission to post art for discussions in the art channel in Discord? You need to post your portfolio in our introductions channel. So if you're part of the Discord, then look in introductions, post your portfolio, maybe a little bit about yourself and then I can let you in. Speaking of that, someone just buzzed my door, so I'll be back in a second.
Okay. Jayden being spotted on the stream, who reported him? So again, whoever wants to draw with us today, there is pure a file in the Discord where this stream is announced. You can find a bunch of different bugs, or if you don't like them, there are just two mammals.
There we go, I'm back. How rude.
They didn't arrest you?
No, not yet, I don't think they... Yeah, I don't, I don't think they, they have a warrant yet. They just came out to threaten me instead.
I'm disappointed.
Yeah. They were disguised as an Amazon delivery driver. Are you an alien? I am. I'm an alien. To the UK that is. That just, that makes me think of that song by Sting.
So you're an illegal alien?
I'm an illegal alien, I'm an Englishman in England. So Jayden, any plans for you to buy me Wukong today or I have to do everything yourself? Yeah, you're gonna have to do that yourself, because I do not have the money to buy you Wukong.
How much is it?
If I did, I would buy it myself, I think it's probably gonna be like fifty pounds or something.
I watched a bit, I somehow I don't have this to play it.
Yeah, I think it would be cool, I mean, I'm not really a I'm not really a souls-like kind of person, so... I know that even if I did get it, I would probably not finish it. I'd get a few hours in and then be like, I'm bored now and then turn it off, so...
I'm assembling my bugs.
Nice, and crab. I watched a video, oh no, you go.
You know that game when you play cities, country, mountain, river and then everyone plays on the same starting letter?
No.
We have that game, for one, there is animal, you need to say animal, for example, an M. And sometimes I would say a bug and my father would be, well that's not an animal, then what is it? It's a bug, bugs are animals, no they're not!
Oh, so you all start with like... Hang on, I'm confused, so you all start on a letter?
Yeah, same letter.
Oh, and you, you say, come up with a animal?
Not just animal, you have a small table you need to fill.
Oh.
So if you got the unique one that's true, I don't know, you get twenty points. If you get one that somebody else get, you get ten points and if you make it wrong, you're done, zero. And then you play a few rounds for maybe like seven categories and then see who won.
Oh. I haven't played that.
Because you're young Jayden, we didn't have computers and phones, we make charts.
I play, I play, I play physical games, like board games, but but not that one. When I was a kid, my parents would always play, like me, my parents, my grandparents would always play card games. And then I, to this day, I forget the rules every single time, so they have to remind me.
You mean like with pocket cards?
Kind of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is, you can play something like Uno with pocket cards. You can play, we call it donkey, I don't know how this would be called. You can play simple, I don't know how to call it. One that everybody knows here. We just call it cards.
Nice.
It's the default one, cards. And every house would have a pocket card.
That crab is cute. Because you're young killed me, I am young, kind of, relatively. I'm like, I'm only twenty-five, that's still young.
Didn't you say twenty-four?
No, I'm twenty-five.
Okay. Let's change this thing mister.
Cause you take, to get my age, you take the year and add one, that's how I make sure I don't forget it. Greetings to Melissa, who's an inspiration for us artist from Serbia who looked up, to look up to her and her art. Oh, that's cute, that's wholesome.
Hello.
Wish you guys favorite card games, Uno always goes hard. Yeah, I played Uno once for like eight hours straight, so I love a bit of Uno.
I'm thinking now which crab I wanna draw. Maybe I wanna draw red one.
That one looks like it's like made of lava, that one's cool.
Yeah, yeah, this, I was drawing it earlier here, this is the one, it looks so cool.
Yeah.
But now I'm thinking maybe this one? The thing is that their legs doesn't make for, it looks flat for the drawing.
Yeah.
Maybe this one, but then I don't see the pincers. I, I just saved this one because it's so nice for the texture. There is shine because it's a bit of water and then there is nice transitions how the pigment is in the pincer. And then it got the direct lighting, nice. Okay, let's draw this one, it's gonna be pain, pain to color it properly, because it's so, so saturated.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be fun then.
For you?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and one of my favorite card games is, is called Cheat. We, we call it a little bit different, but the the family-friendly name for it is Cheat. And basically you have to get rid of your hand of cards by laying them face down and you're like, you'll lay it down and you'll call out what the card is that you've just put down, so you put like, I don't know, seven of diamonds. And you have to get rid of all of your cards by, by doing that, but there's nothing in the rules that actually says you have to put down the seven of diamonds. So you could put down the king of clubs and say it was the seven of diamonds to like try and throw other people off. And then if you get called out for being a cheat, you then have to pick up all of the cards that have been put down so far and add them to your hand. It's pretty cool.
I believe you, I always forget the names and how it's played and they always teach me how to do Uno with pocket cards. I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I always forget them too. So my, my family would be like, oh, let's play Cheat, and I'm like, I know the basic, like I know the gist, but you're gonna have to remind me how we do this again.
Right now with the phones, I think nobody plays cards. It, it was dying out already when, yeah, phone started, but only time we played cards actually was, okay, we are going to summer sea vacation and then maybe we will play cards if it's like four of us.
Yeah. Nah, my grandparents still love to play cards and so do my parents, or so does my mom, so it, it happens quite a lot in, in our family at least. Which is nice. I'm twenty-eight, but my back says I'm seventy-eight. That's like me with my knees. I know exactly what you mean, I didn't know I had a family-friendly name in the first place, yeah, yeah.
I, I demand you tell me later.
It's not, it's not too bad, but the, the name is often abbreviated to BS. If you can figure that out, yeah.
I, I'm rushing because I want to draw these pincers, look how nice they look.
Yeah.
I don't care about the rest.
Yeah, the pincers are nice, the, I always I, once again with crabs, it's their mouths that freak me out. I really don't like them.
It's like they have a second pair of second arms that they use.
Yeah, and then they have like, I don't know, there's just too much going on, there's too much going on there.
This one looks okay when it's closed. These two.
Yeah.
There is a artist...
Then you know that it can open, like that's the weird thing, it's like you know that it's key, it can, it can like open up and it's weird.
There, there is artist, I think Japanese, on Twitter, I follow the profile. He would take the crabs, dry it out, sometimes he makes them from wood. And it rigs them from inside, so it's empty shell and it's all mechanically movable and it looks so super.
What the, I've seen, I've seen the people that take like, I think they take like crabs and lobsters and like certain bugs and turn them into like samurai poses and stuff, like they'll take them apart and turn them into samurai. Those things are cool, but I would never want one.
You know what, do you want the rat that plays jazz?
Yeah, yeah, I want the jazz-playing rats.
I think you have it on Etsy?
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody's taxi derming rats?
I'm looking it up again now.
I got an email, I'm uncovered.
Oh, I didn't see it, I think you're...
It's not, I hear it, but it's not showing good.
They have too much going on in the mouth, it's true, we like simple mouths, yeah, we do. Just, just a normal mouth, why do they have to make it so complicated?
There, there is this thing, when they say if you let evolution long enough, multiple times it happened in the history, that multiple different life forms evolved to crab shape.
Yeah.
So not all the crabs you see are from the like same family, they're from different, just look the, the, the shape. Because where they live, how they behave and because survivability.
Yeah.
Odds are better when you're crab-shaped apparently.
That's like lobsters, right? Lobsters are just things that aren't crabs yet.
Maybe.
It has all of the, it has all of the features of a crab, but it just hasn't like folded up properly yet. I'm only afraid of them when I see them in Elden Ring, I didn't even know Elden Ring had crabs in it.
You finished Elden Ring?
No, no.
Okay, why does it need to have these leg hairs? Who allowed this?
I don't know. I blame, I blame Darwin. Oh yeah, the Elden Ring giant crabs, yeah, those things are gross, we don't like those.
Crab, I like seeing, I like this pretty, it would be nice to see in beach, beach. What I wouldn't like to see, stepping on one on the beach. And also I don't want to eat this, people eat this in restaurant, no.
Yeah. In, in the UK, it's really common to like go to the seaside and you'll get given a crab still in its shell and you'll just like take the shell off and eat it out of that.
How you call little one, shrimp, I was given shrimp in the whole legs and everything. When I first time was there and I was dying hungry, I'm like, you know what, they give this for free as a appetizer? And I'm so hungry, it would be impolite to refuse and I'm dying. This is awful, so I closed eyes and pulled off the legs, it's like...
Yeah. It makes me laugh when you go to a restaurant and order shrimp and then they're like, here's your shrimp, you have to, you have to do everything. It's like you have to pull off the head, you have to pull off the feet, you have to like, I don't know, do whatever. It's like dude, what am I paying for here?
Yeah, but I didn't order it, they just gave it to me.
Yeah.
It's the restaurant next to the hotel.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
I went for the fish and chips.
Hell yeah. You can't come to the UK and not have fish and chips, it's against the rules.
I did that and then I got sick later, not from that, from all the other stuff. Bit of that. But I did try it. How much slower I am when we are talking and I'm trying to draw and thinking everything because it's live? Rather, look how many I draw just like for warm-up? And now I'm like struggling to do any lines.
How long did they take you though?
Much.
Yeah.
If David asks, they took me a long hours.
David is watching.
Hello David.
At least he was, I don't know if he still is.
He usually watches the streams, that's why I'm saying it.
Yeah. Ah, yep, there he is.
Okay, David, if you got time to watch me blubber, what are you doing then?
He said, he said less hours please. Putting on invoices. Yours included, yeah, you gotta be nice Melissa or else you might accidentally mess up your invoice.
No, I, I didn't send my invoice, I don't think. Well now I'm not getting any, right? Okay, I'll remember that in three days.
Yeah.
Okay, where's the legs go, somewhere from here, legs are something I don't understand here, where they are from this side? Like save on the previous one, on this one it's easier, I see what's happening here. But on this lava crab, there is so much things happening here. Where was the one I was drawing, this, like what, what's this? It's just random stuff.
Yeah. It's like it's a weird hip socket.
So we're gonna simplify that. Into bigger shape just.
Oh, that's weird, that was quiet. Thank you for the hydrate Cathy, I'll have a drink. Let's see, Lisa says, this summer I ordered a fish at the, at the restaurant and they gave me a whole fish. I never thought this could happen, now I'll ask every time. I'm trying to think.
Why?
They normally do that, I think over here they normally do that, at least when you order fish and chips, that you get a whole fish.
No, you get the fillet sometimes.
Yeah, that's true.
Because of the bones, how you would eat them, the bones.
Well, yeah, they normally debone them.
I think in America they give you always fillet and you don't, you don't get the whole fish. And there was videos about what you get the whole fish and they didn't like it, I think, I'm not sure, was it America?
I wouldn't like it if they gave me the head, like if they gave me like, I don't, it's just, it's just weird, you know?
It looks more presentable.
Do you think? I kinda think it makes it look worse.
No, it's better, nicer looking.
Yeah, even Lisa said I had to cut off the head and all, I don't have the courage for that, I almost cried, yeah, it's weird.
It's dead fish!
Yeah, but why leave the head on, it looks weird, then you're just like, you have to like look into its cold dead eyes.
No, the eyes popped out long ago if it's cooked enough.
What then, why, yeah. I just don't see how seeing the dead face of something that you're gonna eat like is appetizing.
Is it not better looking when you see piglet on a stick, like in a movie? Rather than piglet without the head?
No.
You know, when, when it's like a feast, it's better looking, I'm telling you. Only what's not nicer looking with the head is chicken, chicken with the cooked head, it's awful, awful.
I don't, I just, I disagree, I mean, no, I think you're right, chicken with the head on is, is awful. But I disagree about like... about the pig as well.
Okay.
If they give, hold on, let's see. Berkeley said, if they give me the head, I feel like there's garbage on my plate. I'm not going to eat it, it's just in the way. Exactly.
Very tough to beat and on the cheeks.
Yeah, but, but that's just, that just feels wrong. It just feels weird.
It's normal.
It probably is normal, but for me, culturally, it feels weird.
I think I'm gonna draw the, the crab I, I had before. I like the, that one more, this one.
That one.
I'm just gonna fix that one, yeah.
Okay.
Because it got more, it, it doesn't have pincers visible like this one.
Hmm.
But it, it got nicer rest of the thing, this one.
It's not got, it's cooler for pose though. The pose on the other one was cooler.
Yeah, but when you, oh, oh, wait. When you draw it, it's not that interesting, see?
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Where is it? There's too many bugs.
Hunter gatherer instincts, you must look your prey in the eyes before eating it. It's not my prey. I didn't hunt it. I ordered it from a menu.
Jaden has zero instincts, just so you know.
That is, that is also true.
Zero.
This head is fully empty. There is nothing going on in here. To be a strong warrior, you have to look it in the eyes. Nah, I think I'm good. I think I'm good. If it came down to it, I could do it.
You know the joke about the cooking fish?
No.
Every time a family have a lunch, they would make a fish and everybody is like, fish is cooked without the head. But why without head? That's how my mother made it. And then they asked the grandma why she did it, and she's like, well, I didn't have the bigger pan, so I had to cut off the, the head. And now Jaden thinks that, that's yucky.
It's because it is. When I was in primary school, we got taken to, uh, we got taken away on like a school trip for a weekend. And when I was there, we, we got to cook some fish on a campfire. And they left it up to us to like, cut the head off of it, gut it, cut the tail off, you know, de-scale it, whatever. Um, and I can remember back then, it didn't roast me out as much, so I cut the head off and was like using it as a little puppet. And it was, it was horrible. Thinking back, I'm like, that is disgusting, but at the time it was hilarious.
Yeah, but if you did more of that, now you wouldn't be a grossed out.
That's true. I would be desensitized to playing with the corpse of a fish, which.
It's a food, it's not playing. Okay, you cannot play with the food, that's the rule.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, we went fishing when we were kids, father would take us and sometimes, uh, when we are left home, he would come and have like two or three kilos of this big fish.
Hmm.
Like really, really small one. And he's like, okay, now you clean this, you have small fingers. I'm like, we don't wanna clean. And he's like, well, I cannot do everything. I cannot catch it and eat it and clean it, so you have to clean it. So you, we take the smallest scissors, you know, the scissors for the.
Oh, the nails, yeah.
Yeah. And you have to gut them with that, and then with the fingers to take out, only thing you watch, it, it got hooks i- inside. That's important part. And you leave them with the head, because when you fry them in a deep oil, they are crispy, the whole thing. I hated it because my, um, hands would smell for two days real bad.
Oh.
The thing with the fish, I don't like the smell.
Yeah, I don't like this, I don't like this fish smell.
It would be like, free labor. Come on, children, free labor.
Disgusting. Hello Vac, Vac says, uh, hi Jaden and Melissa.
Hello. Hello.
Um, this pose has some dynamic movement implied, yeah, it's, yeah, it's true.
It's nicer pose. Once, uh, sometimes here you can order fish to be brought to your door, like from the people who are catching it fresh. Uh, fresh, fresh water fish though. We've go fishing, but there is no way we can catch that type of fish. They also, they need to be catch with the net.
Yeah.
Uh, and once they bring it to my house, I'm like, okay, I'm gonna clean it right away. I put the apron. I take the big, uh, big knife and maybe small, um, the thing for, um.
Cleaver.
Cleavers, yeah, small cleaver. I have cleaver, it says Bentley and it got Bentley logo. It's some kind of knockoff cleaver and for some reason they put Bentley on me. I'm like, this is my cleaver, I'm buying this. Uh, and I, 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 it's probably, I would probably have boots if it was a bit colder. And there are those people, you know, going from door to door, asking for money, making up the causes where they need money. Uh, like making up charities.
Yeah.
And since coming, I'm all bloody, my hands raking of fish and bloody because I'm trying to cut off the head of the fish and it's not going. And, uh, it's going everywhere, anyway, mess. And she's coming to me asking for money. I'm like, lady, I just work here, this is not my house. She leaves. Because, uh, she was really accepting, uh, expecting from me that I leave everything, clean my hands, go in and find my wallet.
Yeah.
I was, uh, doing that. I'm like, I'm just, I'm just worker here, I don't know.
I just hid it, I'm just here to butcher some fish. Just leave me alone. Uh, Vac says, technical question, Melissa, do you not use the navigator window because you frequently zoom out?
Uh, no, this is just my thing. I like how, how I do it, but if I look at my video recording, I hate it then. It works for me, it doesn't work for you. I, I understand. Uh, I will try soon, I think, the, the new screen tablet, because I draw on a pen tablet. That's why I have bigger screen in front of me. I will try the different screen, so I will see, will I continue this? But I think my back will hurt a lot because I will be sitting in a different position.
Hmm, you'll get the, the shrimp, the shrimp back.
Uh, yeah, can I be more shrimp though? Uh, time to find out. There is Facebook group called something like worshiping. I don't know what it's called exactly. Worshiping our god, they say we're, it's not shrimp, it's lobster, I think. If there is another name for lobster. Uh, and everybody is like, we are going, because they say that lobsters usually die because, um, when they are shedding. Um, they say they're immortal, but when they are shedding, they die because they are unable to take off the shell.
Yeah.
And can grow, so they suffocate themselves in the smaller, um, exoskeleton. So they're like, I'm gonna peel my lobster and help him peel and peel until we have the, the god lobster.
I don't want that.
I mean, you're under.
No, I was just gonna say, I don't, I don't want a god lobster. I think I'm good.
I'm telling you, it's gonna, it's gonna be amazing lobster. There are many different groups on Facebook. You are underestimating Facebook. Like, I am in a group for admiring really giant trees, in a group for admiring moss. Uh, there is group, like a local group for the tortoises, because I had tortoises, so that was really helpful. There are many kind of groups. And of course meme groups.
I just, I, I just find it weird that there's meme groups on Facebook, considering everyone on Facebook is sixty years old.
Yeah, uh, like I'm, uh, in a group for SpongeBob. Um, and it's really adult humor, considering it's SpongeBob. And it's unhinged times, I'm like, oh.
You leave SpongeBob alone.
No, like, that, that's not what SpongeBob would say.
I had to, I had to explain to my friend over the weekend how SpongeBob, I'm convinced SpongeBob gave me a fear of butterflies and moths.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they were like, I don't get it. And I was like, just watch this, just watch this clip. And I showed them the clip of the butterfly landing on the, the dome.
Sandy.
Yeah, Sandy's dome thing. And, and they were like, ah, no, I get it now.
The, the episode where they go to Rocky Bottom or how they call it, that's a scary one.
They go to Rock Bottom and he tries to get the bus home and he, he can't.
Uh, I'm like, I've been in this situation, this is scary situation.
Yeah. Uh, Vac says, I zoom in and out a lot as well. Personally, navigator helps me when I rotate the canvas to see how it looks when my canvas is titled? Do you mean tilted? I don't know.
Maybe.
Yeah, because you can get that like, yeah, the little navigator window thing. You can put it in the top corner, can't you?
I don't wanna do that.
Yeah. You sounded so upset.
Yeah, because everybody telling me that, I know, I don't wanna do that, it does nothing for me.
It's okay, Melissa, no one's forcing you to use the navigator, it's fine.
I'm gonna toss a fight now.
Yeah, some Anna says I get the navigator open all the time because I like the concept of it, but I end up never actually using it because I zoom in and out con- constantly anyway. Yeah.
Hello, Anna. Anna is also streaming from time to time.
Hello.
I didn't watch her stream. I don't know, is it my fault or her fault soon?
How is that her fault?
No, I'm joking, because sometimes it's nice to have her streaming. She got really nice style.
No, can give you a, give you a shout out, that'd be nice, uh. I couldn't remember how to do it first. Is it an exclamation mark?
For all the parts that I find unpleasant or they're stretching, uh, too long like these legs, I would.
Sorry, carry on.
Uh, I'm trying to stylize them a bit better, uh, to fit, um, bubble shape. And some parts like this are too weird, so try to simplify those.
Hmm.
I'm not telling it's now cute, but it's bit more pleasant to the eye. Than it was, I think. What I did now. I pick up the color.
Uh, no, I've not streamed in like a year, I'm extremely lazy. Ah, that's all right.
See, it's not my fault. I didn't miss the stream.
I can imagine it's one of those things where once you, once you come out of the routine, it's really hard to get back into it again.
Jaden gets you because he, Jaden wasn't streaming for four days and he's feeling stuck. Not stuck, how you would say.
I just, I just, uh, I just felt like I didn't know what I was doing at all.
Isn't it all of us?
Yeah.
Daily.
Yeah. Sometimes I just open up Stream Labs and I'm like, I, 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 how did I do any of this stuff? It comes back pretty quick, but yeah. Um, it's a huge hurdle just to press that dang button, yeah. Maybe one day.
Every time I need to, to record something, I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Uh, because, and then when I started drawing without recording, like normal work, I'm like, this is so much easier. It's so much easier to start, to make yourself start.
Yeah. Uh, Vac says, Melissa, did you watch Alien Romulus?
Now, what is it?
Do you watch horror movies, Melissa? I can't remember if you.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
I'm too scared for that.
Ah. I really wanna watch Alien Romulus, but I, uh, I haven't got around to it yet. I've heard it's really good though.
What kind of horror is it?
Um, like, I don't know what you describe it as. It's like a science fiction. A science fiction horror. There's a creature that is stalking people and trying to eat them.
Okay, then it's maybe not scary.
Yeah, it's not really. I, like, the first Alien movie is classed as a horror movie, but I don't think it's scary. It's, it's tense. Like, there's, uh, tense moments, but that's.
Creature horrors that don't have human intelligence and human emotions like vengeance and stuff are not scary.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the same, that's, that's Alien basically. Um, but yeah, there's a, there's a creature in it called the face hugger, which is kind of crab-like.
I know, I know what is.
Yeah. Aliens, yeah.
I'm, uh, from the, eh, um, the Prometheus I watched. And every time, the, the original, is it engineers or builders, how they call them?
I don't, I, I don't know. I think they were called like engineers, I don't know.
The Squidward person in the beginning.
Yeah.
That's fun. The, the creatures are fun.
I, I didn't watch Prometheus because I, I just didn't really see the point. I was like, it's, so it's an Alien movie that's not really an Alien movie, but it's an Alien movie. And then.
This is great girl.
Did Alien need a prequel? I don't know. Not really.
I watched it.
Yeah. Maybe I'll watch it at some point. Didn't it have a bunch of like religious, uh, like, subtext to it? Obviously, it's called Prometheus.
Prometheus? I don't know. I, I'm not smart for the, watching movies with a hidden message. What you show me, what I see usually.
Yeah, that's, yeah, same, honestly.
I like when, when they have lore behind it, I can dig in and watch YouTube videos about it explaining it more, that I like. When there is world building to be explained.
Yeah.
Do I care about metaphors? Not much.
I'm, I'm very often too stupid to, to pick up on metaphors. I wish I was the type of person that could watch a movie and, uh, and pick it apart, but I really just can't.
If I pick up on metaphor, it's usually some kind of depressing feeling I get. It's usually some sad metaphor for so- something that hurts. Why would I do that to myself? I wanna be ignorant.
What's a meta for? That's terrible, I've heard that one before. What's this meta for? Uh, Draco Leach, hello, hello, I'm pretty new here, but I feel like I know you guys from THU. I can't wait for it to happen again. Yeah, we're gonna have some, uh, some members of the team at THU. Um, gonna have, uh, one of our art directors, uh, Yoris, and our talent acquisition manager Jill, which would, will be there this year. So you should see them around. I, I know they're looking forward to it. We're going to XDS as well this year. Which is gonna.
Is that the one in Canada?
Yeah. Yeah, Amy and Emra are going to that one, so we're all over the place.
What's about the next three days, four days?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're, we'll be at concert one oh one on Friday, this, this Friday. But there's like a whole bunch of us gonna be there, because we're based in the UK and it's in London, so it's easier, it's easy enough for us all to get there.
I'm gonna see Jaden in person, and if Jaden is too nice to me today, that's probably why.
How dare you? I'm always nice to you. You're always the one that bullies me.
It's not bullying, it's, it's la- tough love.
Tough love, yeah, okay. All right.
I'm gonna make you the fish with the head.
I do not want that, thank you. Also, where are you gonna cook that? We're staying in a hotel without a kitchen.
Don't test me.
You're just gonna be out in the street, cooking a fish.
Last evening, I started eating sushi here, Alexa recommended me, and I really liked it. Started eating sushi here, and then last evening I was searching for Korean barbecue and sushi places around the hotel when I'm hungry. I know where the kebab, kebabs are, okay, the, the. I know where the kebab, kebabs are. Okay, that, that's, that's confirmed that I know. Let's see where the barbecue, Korean barbecue is.
Yeah.
The one I can cook myself, you know?
Yeah. I've never, I've never been to Korean barbecue. I'd really like to though. There's just not one around me.
Okay, we are going to Korean barbecue.
Hmm.
Only thing I couldn't decide on is that menu is just the words, not the pictures.
Oh yeah.
Uh, and I don't know what, what is what.
Yeah. It's, that's difficult. Uh, have you two ever gone to THU? It's super fun. I, I've never been to THU. Um, have you Melissa?
Well, if somebody calls, calls me, I can go. Just saying.
Um, yeah, no, I've never, I've never been. I've only like. I've only worked sort of in the art, art sector for. This is my second year now, so. I haven't had a, haven't had much perchance. Another to, another technical question, Melissa. Do you notice the engagement difference with your posts on Instagram when it says a reel or a regular post? Cause I've been told that reels get picked up a lot more by the algorithm, so it's quite good for artists. I was curious if I should do it as well.
Yeah, if you have the patience to edit your videos, to do small bites of music, you can do it. It gets you much more. The thing is you get disappointed when you post normal, like, oh, look, I made illustration. Nobody cares. Uh, actually Instagram is not promoting that, but sometimes if you pick the sound, it's gonna be promoted. So it got bit of life here, then it got bit quiet, then that same sound got a, a bit of new life maybe two, three weeks later. So you get those bursts and then you, uh, it gets shown to new people. That's the difference. Post gets maybe two, three days and that's all. And you will be happy if your followers get to see it. Uh, I'm not satisfied with the Instagram lately, um, because it always changes how it works. And uh, if you really wanna. Have Instagram, uh, to, to grow it a lot, you'd mostly need to work just on that, like making art for making new reels constantly. Uh, and that's exhausting. I have other stuff to do. So sometimes I repost stuff that doesn't work that much. I post a lot of work that I did for companies that, that doesn't get almost anything.
Yeah.
If you again are searching to reach new people.
Yeah.
So it's tricky.
Yeah. I mean, E- uh, Elena says, don't you find it all? Don't you find it tedious to do all this hoop jumping just to get some exposure on Instagram? I find it so tiring.
It is tiring, but it, it pays off. Yeah, I did get a lot of work from Instagram. Uh, when they find me there, I get. Invited to stuff from Instagram, um, or at least they chose to call me out from there. Uh, and collaborations with the, with the brands and stuff. And people find you there, so it's good for that. It's always good to find you there, to have some kind of representation. Now, if you wanna grow it. Uh, at least two years ago, reels were really good for growing uh your audience. Uh, you need to make something new, something real good looking and to pick the sound, um, to add it to that. Editing part. It looks like it's gonna take five minutes, it's gonna take two hours. And then export is not looking good, so you have to do it again and again. And then you post it, it's not, um, synced well.
Yeah.
So all of that.
I think that's the thing, like finding. Finding trending sounds and stuff is like. A pain too, because also by the time you've done something and synced it up to the sound and done all that stuff. If you don't do it quick enough, the time's gone. Like, things move on so quick now. That.
Yeah, exactly.
Constantly playing catch-up. Unless you have a bunch of stuff in the backlog that you can just like throw a sound on.
I'm not finding enough time. I would like to do, draw it in your style, uh, myself, but I'm postponing it, I think for a year, if not longer.
Yeah.
Uh, the background is temporarily be- before uh I put on some, maybe it could be all blue. Because I, I, I hate to draw rocks, but I don't like it how it looks now. Just blue background.
Blue.
Blue to gray. Like that.
Uh, there's too many to be honest. I just want to draw. You can just, you can do that. You can just draw. If you don't wanna, if you don't wanna.
Some representation of you is nice.
Yeah. That's the thing. I mean, you don't, you don't have to like, you don't have to go hard uh on social media, but it definitely. Can help, as Melissa said, like it can, it can really pay off, but it is a lot of work, so. Berkeley says lots of skills and different hats to wear as an artist these days. Yeah, it can, I'm sure it can feel like that.
Oh, it is, uh. Doing freelance is a bit different from doing full-time, uh, doing marketing management for yourself. Then you're invited to be speaker, then you're invited to be guest for this. Uh, then they want to do collaborations, so you'll have to make video and edit it and. The, recently we did the course. Now I, I need to write a script and to play, plan stuff. It's a lot of stuff to be done.
Yeah. Uh, some Anna says, just doing hashtags was enough for me personally, to be honest. I can't get myself to play the social media game more than that. Yeah.
Yeah, now, now hashtags doesn't work at all. Uh, sometimes they don't allow you more, more than like four, because people probably misuse them a lot.
Hmm, hmm. Oh man, yeah, don't even, don't even start with Twitter. The whole Twitter thing is like.
Uh, but they can work. Uh, I made my for you page to be mostly art.
Yeah.
And it promotes me. Uh, sometimes people uh show skill on real quick sketches and get a lot of um. Exposure.
Yeah.
Which is nice. I find a lot of new artists, especially Asian artists there.
Yeah.
The names I can, I cannot read because they didn't put it, um. In alphabet.
Yeah, they didn't put it like a Roman, um, like Roman characters, yeah.
So I'm like, whoever you are, I like your art.
But yeah, that, that sucks that your engagement went down so much though, Vax. That's really unfortunate.
It's not, it's everyone's engagement, yeah.
Yeah. Twitter is in an interesting place right now anyway, where it's sort of. I. I don't really, I don't really touch it. I haven't been on Twitter for a long time. I think the last time I went on there was literally. Uh. What was it? Something, something with Gamescom where I was like, hmm, I wonder what people are saying about this. So I just went on Twitter and searched for what was happening on Gamescom and that was it. Uh, I swiftly found out that I didn't, I didn't want to know what people were saying about it and I didn't care. So I, I closed the app again instantly, but.
I wouldn't recommend touching on, uh, when you see what's trending, people misuse those hashtags and post malicious stuff.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't suggest it's good for that.
Yeah.
But for your page, I made it so it's mostly art and I like my for you page.
Yeah.
The, the front one.
Yeah. Uh, local art scenes and small businesses are a good launch point if you don't mind putting yourself out there in person. Um, yeah, I can see that. And uh, Berkeley said that edge, that edge lighting is cool.
It's gonna be tricky to uh make it work. It needs to be even whiter.
Hmm.
Brighter. But it looks nice so far, because I don't think this photo is edited too much. You get these glares. Uh, but it's nice because now you know, okay, for the, between the shine and the. Light of the shell, we can add this blue. It's gonna look nice.
Hmm.
I like these crabs of the red legs. Yes, but also there is a bit of blue here on the other one. Yeah, this one, it's even more blue. Look how nice it is. I don't know the names though. Uh, the, the most of my childhood, uh, outside in the summer, I would spend on a pond. Uh, there are frogs, um. Like salamanders and stuff. I would play with those. I cannot imagine how much time I would spend if I grew next to the seashore with this kind of rocks and stuff growing in them. I would probably be a huge fan of the sea creatures.
Uh, sorry, just, just typing some stuff. Uh, Vax says, I'm downloading iMovie right now to edit the reels and post them on Instagram. Yeah. Good luck. Have fun.
Have fun editing 10 seconds video for two hours.
Yeah. Some people really enjoy that stuff though. Like, some people really like that kind of, um. That kind of video editing.
It's okay. It, I like when it's done and, and it syncs perfectly. Sometimes I edit over some, somebody's o- other, uh, where it needs to be cut because I don't have a great, um, sound. I don't recognize the tact, how you say it.
Yeah.
Where it needs to be cut, so I, I watch how other people did it. And sometimes I edit it, I'm like, this doesn't look how, how I hoped it's gonna look.
Hmm. Draco says, oh man, I just started Twitter since I saw tons of artists using it. Would you still recommend it to artists even after Elon? Hmm. I don't, I don't know. What do you think, Melissa?
I mean, I think I made it two years ago, some, sometimes when E- Elon arrived. And for me, it worked okay. Many artists did move to the different platforms. I tried making blue sky. For me, that's kinda dead.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe other people had more luck. And now you have Kara. That works fine. But it's only artist. It, it never gets to, uh, to slap me. Every time I post something on Instagram, everyone is mostly nice. On Twitter. Uh, they don't follow you, they are not fun, they just bluntly ask you something, bit insulting and you're like, okay.
It is really funny, like the different personalities that you get on the different social medias, like. It, it, it's really strange. But. I don't know. I mean. I, I personally think that for a place to share your artwork and stuff, I think that. Stuff like Instagram is, is better, but that's just purely from like a, an ease of use thing. I really hate looking at people's Twitter profiles because I think they're always really messy and horrible.
Yeah. Uh, well, what I, what I do is I mostly try to post my art and not reshare too much. Because I know when I go to somebody's profile, if they reshare too much and I cannot find their art in the first few seconds.
Yeah.
I'm like, who are you? I, I, I don't.
Yeah, that's why, that's why when people post their portfolios and introductions on the Discord, I. We ask people not to use Twitter, like we, we want something like an art station or an Instagram, because. That just means that I don't have to root around through like a Twitter page to try and figure out. What is art that has been liked or re- or retweeted or whatever. You know, I can just see, ah, this is the artwork. Cool.
I understand that. I'm trying to keep my clean, though I sometimes really like to reshare something.
Hmm.
Again, I try to be as an art page.
Yeah.
N- n- not my personal page.
Yeah, I think that's fair enough. I, I, I think. You know, if you wanna be like an art sharing page, then that's totally fine. But it's if people are using it for like portfolio stuff, it's like. Just, it's just a pain.
Oh, and another thing on Twitter, I get almost daily the spam messages, usually Korean. Uh, you know, classical spam, trying to fish you for something.
Oh yeah, yeah.
That's not nice.
Some Anna says, I mainly use Twitter. Sometimes it's alright, but sometimes it just gives you gig a slop after you clicked on something slightly not art-related.
Uh.
Hmm, yeah. Not to mention, these platforms feed you what, feed what you post into their AI, yeah.
Uh. Good thing about it is you, if you're making a bit more not safe for work art, like you have some, um, blood and stuff that cannot be on Instagram, it can be there.
Hmm.
That's only thing.
Yeah.
And sometimes if your post explode, it gets, it reaches a lot of people.
Hmm.
Oh yeah, and there is always, hmm?
I was gonna say, and there's always people that re-upload your, your reels. In places as well, right Melissa?
We won't talk about it.
But yeah, that is. It's crazy.
Who said that?
No, that's, no, that's, I did.
Ah, you did. I will explain you later where, where that got me.
Uh, dead internet theory. Yeah, I mean. I feel like it's been like that for a long time. I mean, that's Facebook. Facebook is the peak of, of dead internet, where it's just bots talking to bots, talking to bots, and then there's Melissa.
Yeah, there's me, haha, fun with you.
Yeah. Facebook is millions of bots and then Melissa sat there just enjoying their company.
I'm appreciating big trees and mosses, okay?
Yeah. That's fair. I can, I can appreciate that too, to be honest.
So you will join group?
Absolutely not. Um. Draco Leach said, as a dragon art, uh, as a dragon artist, I have to say, Melissa, you've been a huge inspiration for several years. Oh, that's wholesome.
Thank you. I'm not showing any of that on the stream now, that why I'm inspiration, because I'm just scribbling here. I've been, I've been doing this life for past five minutes. Because I, I wanna, I wanna establish how it can look like, so I can do the rest. Um, the color, you have a lot of mixing of colors and, um, shine from the sky. And material, how it's shiny, the, the shell. Looks kinda more like meat than, than it's when you hit it, that's gonna be plasticky.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm not sure. And I wouldn't touch it.
Why not?
Because it looks like bug.
Yes.
I, I, oh, I didn't put that. I really like horseshoe crabs. They look so cute.
Horseshoe crabs. The name rings a bell. You have to look it up.
You know them, you know them. One with the p- purple blood.
Oh, oh yeah, the, the. Um, yeah, I know, I know the ones. They've got like a dome. They're just a dome with a tail.
Yeah, they, they hide their ugly legs.
Yeah.
Scary legs.
Yeah. Cause yeah, they, they like bleed them for medicines, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do.
I had a friend who, uh, had vampire crabs. Those things are, those are really cute.
What do they do?
They're just like, they're just really deep purple crabs. Um, they're like tiny, tiny little crabs. They're like this big. Um. And they're like purple. That's all. I don't know if they, I don't, they, I don't know why they're called vampire crabs.
They must eat something that they're called vampire crabs.
I'll Google it.
They eat fish and they cut their head off.
Uh, oh, no, it's literally just because they have bright yellow eyes, which contrasts their orange and purple abdomen. So it just makes them look spooky. So people are like, ah, spooky, yes, vampire. But yeah, they're just little guys. They're just little dudes.
That's Katie saying little guys. That's Katie saying, little guys, little dudes. It's, it's, I'm imagining her when you say that.
Yeah. Yeah. I keep telling Katie that we need to get her on a stream at some point. She doesn't wanna do it.
I mean, maybe, I don't know, do you play D and D or something? We can maybe have a stream like that. And we can draw the characters you described or something.
Maybe.
There is an idea for a stream.
Maybe.
Oh, that would be good idea actually. Or if people from chat have their original characters or something.
Yeah. I've, I've watched a D and D show before where as they're playing the game, they have an artist in the background, like, doing sketches of the scenes that they're in, stuff like that, which is pretty cool.
Nice. This blue.
I played a, I played like a D and D one-shot the other day for a friend's birthday.
Why are you a friend?
And, um, and I remembered that I can't play D and D. I really struggle. I, I just, I don't know, just everything about it, I really struggle with. I like the concept of D and D. I like the idea. But I don't have the, I don't have the patience to play it. Like, everything takes so long and you're sat there for like hours and hours and hours. I just can't, I just can't do it.
Well, it's interesting when it's your turn, but then you have to wait another four people.
Yeah. And, and my thing as well is like, like, sa- say you all go into a room, right? I just wanna go in and just be like, yeah, I wanna check this. There's nothing there? Cool. I wanna check this. There's nothing there? Cool. I wanna check this. But then I have to remind myself that I'm not the only person playing. So I then have to sit there and just wait for someone else to have the idea to go and check the chest in the middle of the room. You know? It's stressful, it's stressful.
So you wanna scream at them?
Yeah.
See, violence is, is the answer.
It stresses me out not being the main character. It's okay.
Uh, it, I think it's better if you play with friends because you already like your friends.
I've only played with my friends.
Yeah, yeah, but you can play with strangers too, and I think that would feel a bit tough.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be worth playing with strangers for sure.
I don't know what, I can joke with them.
I don't mind the occasional like D and D one-shot, but I don't think I can ever do a full campaign because I would probably, like, tear my hair out. You could just have a selfish character that must do everything. That is true. That is true.
But it would be one shot for that character.
Yeah. I would, I think my friends would very quickly be like, why are we playing with this guy? Or, or rather, why are we watching this guy play? But, that's the thing. I like the concept. I like the idea. The thought of D and D is fun. But in practice, I've figured out that I just don't, I don't vibe with it.
The hidden is a hater. He feels like he's a hater.
I, the thing is, I'm not a hater because I, I like it, you know? It's just not for me. So I lap instead, where I can be the main character of my own story and just do what I want.
Uh, the, the, the white light is, is, um, tricky. I'm trying first to base where, where I want it, uh, until I get it brighter. But it's tricky because it looks muddy constantly.
How do you, how do you fix that?
Painting over and over and over again until it looks good.
Change the value, change the value, change the hue.
Exactly.
Yeah.
This is the whole painting right there.
Wow. Thanks, Melissa. Now I can be an artist, just like you.
We're gonna struggle together. I mean, you can read it a bit, you can start painting, and then you see, okay, mine is way too dark. And maybe desaturated, and then you can try different brush. Sometimes that helps because you're locked in. I don't like with the airbrush, but maybe if you turn crab upside down, maybe we wanna see something.
I'd really love it if Lunar Academy, we could do one of those like really cheesy adverts, you know? That, what we just, what we just did reminded me of it, where it's like, man, I really wish I could be an artist. And then it's like, you can just follow these three simple steps. Go to lunaracademy.co, pick your favorite course. And you too can be an advert, can be an artist, just like Melissa. It's like, wow, thanks. I can't wait to get started.
Can you do it without me then?
No.
You, you have security.
No, you have, no, you have to be there to do it because it means more if it comes from the artist.
I don't wanna be tele shop person.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do. You were born, you were born for that, Melissa. You can tell.
Let me just check something, um, i- if I know it correct.
As a Lunar Academy student currently, I would absolutely do this. See? It's perfect.
I think, uh,
It's your destiny, Melissa. See? Even David said so.
I cannot, uh, translate it to English because I will forget it. I was trying to find it and then read it out. Uh, the other day, what all we know as a, from childhood, I like, in the middle of the night, if you woke me up, I know one number, one number only, like a phone number. It's tele shop number because you heard it so many times, repeated and repeated in your childhood while you're waiting for cartoons. So if you wake me up and ask for a number, there's gonna be the number.
That's funny. The, the sad thing is that if that happened to me, the only phone number that I would be able to tell you is my own mobile number. So it's just like, oh no, someone's breaking into my house. Who do I call? Myself.
Uh, well, I do remember parents' numbers because before you would do, uh, prepaid. And then it would be easy just to learn number, uh, when you're telling it to the person where you're paying. I don't know how you call it. And I'm always like, okay, if I lose my phone and I'm not anywhere around my home, I need to know some numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's sensible. Maybe I should just have them written down in like a little notebook or something.
What if they steal your notebook too?
What the hell? That's just, that's just rude at that point.
You have to yell really loud. Thief don't steer, how you say it in English?
Oh. It's like Swiper, no swiping.
Swiper, okay, okay, Swiper, don't swipe.
Dora the Explorer. Swiping, no swiping.
Yeah, you need to be really clear and they're gonna stop.
Man, I used to love Dora the Explorer when I was a kid. I just had the map,
Younger.
The map song stuck in my head for ages.
It's so stupid song. It's so stupid.
It's a great song. He tells you exactly what he is and exactly what he does. He's a map.
I, I'm too old for Dora, okay?
You never, you're never too old for Dora the Explorer, Melissa.
But I was, I was just in time to watch Ren and Stimpy, and there is one episode with praying mantis. There is a song about praying mantis that I remember.
Yeah.
In Serbien Dog. At the end, praying mantis eat your heads off.
Yeah.
It was some kind of party and they really wanted to go to party and I think it's starting eating their head. That's what I remember.
Man. I hate that, I hate that show so much.
I love it. You can go play with your Dora Explorer.
You know what? Maybe I will. Uh, oh, good luck with your, with your rail vac. You're about to post it. Good luck.
Okay, good luck. May algorithm have mercy on you.
Yeah, may, may the algorithm have mercy on your soul. Uh, Samantha says, if you're struggling with a painting, just take a break for 20 minutes and come back to it, or two hours, or two days. What, you know, just give up on it, actually.
Or to forest, yeah, yeah. To forest. Start community.
I wanna do that.
I, I will send you video later. I just finished watching the video, uh, it popped out randomly on YouTube. It's from a writer. Uh, the video is named "The hut in the woods is not the answer."
But it is.
And, no, he did it. He, he did everything. Uh, he was hiking the, how you say? I'm, I'm gonna say Alpaca, but it's not Alpaca. The mountain is in, uh, North America.
Oh, uh, I forgot them. Rockies?
On a. No, no, it sounds like what I said, but mine is animal.
Oh, Ap- is it the Appalachian?
Appalachian, okay.
Yeah.
That one. He started doing that trail and there he get bored. It was too long.
Yeah, it's cause he's hiking. You know, he's not, he's not in a cabin in the woods. He's hiking across mountains.
Oh, but he, he did also the cabin in the, in the woods too. Maybe New Zealand, Zealand, I think.
Well, he's doing it wrong.
Okay.
This man needs to stop taking away my dreams, okay? You've gotta have, you've gotta have something to hold on to, Melissa. And mine is a cabin in the woods. Although I feel like the only time where I would really hate it is at night because woods are creepy at nighttime.
They are?
Yeah.
I agree. Why this is not working?
Did you break it?
Hmm, let me see. Brush is a hundred percent. Ah, I'm idiot, look.
Wrong layer.
I'm, I'm remembering to copy it from time to time because I want to have a process.
Yeah.
And, uh, sometimes I forgot that I turned off the layer. I'm like, okay, let's retrace what I did. This needs to be like blue. Maybe more saturated, no? Reflections are always tricky part.
Especially because it's a, it's a bit of, it's a bit of a strange shape.
Yeah, but I'm trying to also stylize it in the same time, uh, also with the color. And then trying to draw it following the reference.
Yeah.
I mean, I can invent it. At the end, if it doesn't work, you can re-invent it. Uh, yeah, but doing this, I may not learn how to paint the shell properly. But you get used to the bug shape. Enough that you hate them a bit less or scared a bit less.
I don't know, man.
It's like getting to, to know them better when you draw something.
I've seen, I've seen a lot of spiders in my life, but I still hate them.
That's okay. I hate them too.
Even those little ones that everyone thinks are really cute, with the big, with the big eyes, like, no. Yeah, the jumping ones? Yeah, I'm like, no.
Okay, I, I did hold him on the hand and I did take some photos of him. It's so cute because they are little hunters. Uh, they, they are preying on small, small flies or something.
Well, that's good for them. They can do it away from me. I don't want them near me.
They're really tiny. You barely e- ever see them. I thought we don't have them until I noticed on the, on the table.
Apparently around where I live, um, a, like, species of spider has just been, uh, I don't know if it's just been found or if it's like somehow just been brought here. But it's like this giant spider that eats small fish.
Really? You have it there?
Yeah, which is gross and horrible, and I hate it.
Oh, it's getting somewhere. Reflection now looks a bit better.
Yeah.
I mean, this is not good reference because it's, it looks like the sun is going down and maybe it's cloudy. This one would be nicer. Maybe I would jump to looking at this one. Maybe I could do it right away actually, but it got mo- mostly the front.
Yeah.
Close and this blue. I like this blue. Let me, let me get this blue first.
Yeah, it's a really nice, it's a really cool, uh, colored crab, like I really like it.
If anyone is drawing the, any other reference or something, you can post it in a study.
Yeah.
Channel on our Discord. I wanna see it.
Yeah, me too.
Maybe you draw it so good I may even scream. Oh, the other day before we released the, the sparrow we had, I was drawing the, the horses. And I wanted to start drawing something else. I think I sit for work, the sparrow is constantly on my shoulder. Well, I'm cooking and eating and now, okay, I'm sitting for work. It's on shoulder, um. I open and I open pure F, and what I draw previous day, the horse, it jumps on the screen, uh, but it opens from nothing. And it got scared, spooked, and it doesn't wanna sit on, on my, on me anymore. It sits bit on the monitor. And from that day, it was wild. It was scared of us, it was scared of everything. Finally, in- instinct worked. Instinct is like, I need to get away from you. I'm like, okay. You just, we put it in a cage because it needs to learn just to eat properly because we were hand feeding it. And when it did that, you go out.
So you're birdless again.
I'm birdless again, yes.
Oh, no.
No, it's good, it's good. I, I don't have to be waking up at 6:00 AM. I mean, Nana does usually feed them early in the morning, but I feed them the rest of the day.
I give you like two weeks.
No, no, okay, two weeks is exactly correct because in, um, second, end of second week in September, I'm going to like small fair with the small animals, including birds. And it's be, gonna be really hard to not buy something.
Yeah, I reckon, yeah. I, yeah, I give you two weeks. I'm gonna stick with it.
Yeah, it, it's happening in two weeks. Um, I will, my strategy is first to ask for a business card. I'm like, I'm gonna get interesting blah blah, not to buy on spot because I did that previously. To buy animal on the spot and then come home and research, research, find animals sitting there. Okay, read more, what they like. What they need. That's how I got, hmm?
No, it's just funny. Just like sat there starving and you're like, I don't know what to give it.
No, no, I, I, that's how I got quails. I bought, I hink four quails and one dude. And the dude, uh, the, the guy that sold me was like, okay, you need this cage. And he sold me really small cage. It's used for, um, industrial production of eggs. And animals don't have much space to walk in. I was really, I was really scared for them. And those cannibals would not had feed be- because they are now jumpy, scared of us. So I mostly put them in a spare room. We have, that room smelled of, on a chicken feed for like a year. Because they toss it around and it's really perfumed. And, uh, I researched more. It was winter, so I had to keep them in that room for like a month. Until it was warm enough, so I built them the cage, um, bigger cage with the insulated room for them with the light, with the feeders and stuff, so it's much nicer than what they had. What I should have done in first, okay, those are interesting quails. I'm gonna go home and research and make them the house, and then I'm gonna buy them, no?
You just get caught up in all the excitement.
Exactly. That's why I have my husband. He's like to say that they're no. No, you happen what did the last time? And he's like, I fed them.
But this is the same husband that also brings back like half-dead birds and expects you to look like, expects you to nurse them back to hell.
No, but he doesn't tell me you have to do it. I like, do. No, but he doesn't tell me you have to do it. I like do it on my own. I just complain like you do complain, but I would help them too.
Yeah.
Today, for example, we saw, okay, this one was dead. The, um, what's called the name in the English?
Pigeon.
No, it's a mama.
Oh.
With gray, black and white. It's not a skunk, the other one.
Badger?
Yes, badger. We saw that badger.
Oh, no.
Then I got bright idea. It would be good to preserve the skeleton. But that would be really suspicious. I'm like, I will bite. He's like, okay, bite. Don't touch this one.
Yeah, yeah, don't touch the roadkill.
It was good preserved what I could see from a car. Some people do like that.
I love badgers, but they're really rare to see them, like, uh...
Only when I, I see like three or four over roadkill.
Yeah.
I never saw a live one.
I've, I've never seen a live one. A lot of the time, they, a lot of the time, they know, uh, that they see you before you see them and then they just dip. Because they're not rare. In the UK, they're, they're really common. You just never see them.
I, I, in forest where, where my, um, home, uh, was, you find the holes, they're either badgers or foxes. And sometimes you can see which one is it.
Yeah.
But it's not good idea to walk with the dog around there, because dogs know to go into the hole and animal got advantage there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I've seen plenty of foxes. I've heard plenty of foxes as well.
Of what?
I've heard a lot of foxes too.
Ah.
It's so loud.
They have unpleasant calling.
Yeah, you just scream. Uh... Fax says, oh my god, Melissa, we have the same birthday. When's your birthday? How did you find out Melissa's birthday?
Does it say on Twitter, maybe?
Oh, maybe.
I don't know where it says. Um, maybe I told, I, I am gonna be on my birthday. I'm gonna be in Paris, signing, Paris, signing the cards for L'Orchana.
Oh.
Not for L'Orchana, but for the event with the L'Orchana.
Yeah, maybe.
Uh, I said that it's gonna be my birthday.
Spooktober post on Instagram. Oh, okay. That makes sense.
Told you, how dare you? And it's me.
Nice birthday. I don't know. I don't know when anybody's birthday is. I don't even know when most of my family's birthdays are.
I write them. For the important ones, I write them in a notebook.
Hmm.
So, and when it's like two months in advance, on Telegram, you can schedule your message for a date and time. I schedule a message. Congratulations, person to, person, birthday to this and that person.
Wow.
I would forget every time.
So you just have messages sent out on a timer of people's birthdays?
To me, to me, so I can.
Oh, alright, okay. I thought you meant, I thought you meant that you had like a message scheduled to send to that person. And I was like, wow. A lot of, a lot of love and care went into that.
It's love and care that I'm trying to remember with everything I got.
Yeah. Um, or have a physical calendar where you can write things on. Yeah, that would work too.
I tried that, uh, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. I miss.
It relies on you checking the calendar, that's the thing.
I need to go to donate blood, because they had really good calendar. They give you tissue, bit of crackers or something, and a calendar if you go around New Year's, so you have to time it. Uh, their calendar was like, um, desk, okay, Jaden, we need to ask, uh, Moon Colony to make calendars.
You know what? That's actually a really good idea. Because I need, I need a calendar.
The, the desk one, like triangular, but in front, it got, uh, in, in, it was the part of it, like a notebook. That you can pull off the pages on a string.
Oh.
And it's nice to put the pen, you had notebook and calendar to flip it around, and we can put our illustrations too.
Yeah.
And we can write on it.
Yeah. David suggested before.
Who suggested?
I don't know. It would have been, uh, I, I do seem to remember that being suggested before.
Okay, but now we said it publicly. Now we have to do it.
Yeah, that's how that works.
Is that David's circle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perhaps the accountant blocked it? David, no.
David, I cannot keep donating my blood for every calendar I want. I'm joking, I'm donating blood because I want.
I've never donated blood before. But...
Uh, I mean, it's a nice feeling if you want to.
Yeah. Yeah, ma- maybe. I will buy your calendar. David said he's gonna buy, he'll buy us a calendar.
Just to not make it, I see, I see.
Can you buy us a Moon Colony calendar, David? That's the real question.
Here, if you are working for, um, company here, if you donate blood, you get maybe two day, one day to three days, depends, I don't know.
Hmm.
Uh, you don't have to work like holiday and you will see many people uh, just donating so they don't have to work. And they always ask me, do you need the paper, what you did today? I'm like, no, do work, yes, but why don't you want to? I work for myself. It doesn't matter.
Uh, I says, did Moon Colony also do World of Warcraft Warbringers art? I don't think so. I've, I haven't heard of us doing it. But... That's crazy.
Some, some recently.
Yeah, not, not Warbringers though. We did, um, the, the, the new expansion stuff.
This is still too dark.
Um... That's crazy, you get days off for donating blood.
Yeah, because, um, but you never, well, it happens, but you get people, uh, to donate blood, uh, so people can get treated.
Yeah. I'd donate blood if I got a day off for it.
David?
David. I don't know if David is the one in charge of that.
No, he is, because he's forbidding calendars.
Uh, usually it's one day in workplace and it was three in school. Three days? What, what?
Well, in military, when military was, uh, you have to go. They're like, okay, here are the stations and bed. Please lay down. Nobody is laying down. You will get three day of the military to go do whatever you want. Everybody is giving blood. And they're like, okay, you cannot, because you need to give him your blood. You cannot.
Yeah, you need more blood. That'd probably end up being me. I'll probably go to donate blood and they'll be like, no, we don't want yours.
Uh, depends also how much you weigh. Uh, for girls, it's like if you are under sixty kilogram, we, we won't take it.
I will probably not weigh enough.
Oh.
Oh, no, that's fine. I, I weigh more. In, in the UK, you need to be between fifty and a hundred and fifty-eight kilograms. I weigh about sixty, so...
Fifty, how, what's the bottom limit?
Fifty is the bottom limit.
Oh, you have a smaller limit. Is that for girls or both?
Uh...
Uh, for men?
I think it's both. Let me check. Yeah. Yeah, it's for both.
Here is fifty for girl, oh, sixty for girls. But they're gonna check every time how much, uh, iron you have? Before they take any?
Yeah.
And you always have really uncomfortable question or to do.
Oh, yeah. I can, oh, yeah, I see.
What?
Just looking at all of the questions that they ask you when you become a donor.
It progressively gets worse and worse.
Yeah.
You do this, you do that.
Stop asking me questions. Uh, what kind of dragon is this? You've never seen a dragon like this before?
Well, if you, if you are new on the stream, uh, for today, the previous stream, uh, Jaden and Alex did were questioning why we never do the bugs. And they had bright idea that I should draw bugs. And I really don't like them that much, but I was telling the way to get used to them is to draw them more, because then you get, um, acquaint, acquainted with them, how you say, friendly with them?
Yeah, acquainted.
acquainted. Uh, you, you learn how to draw the, the components and stuff. The problem is these are not moving pictures. When I see this on a picture, it's fine, but when Nanas bring this to feed the bird and this starts jumping, because he didn't cut off the head properly, I start screaming, because now it's in my house. And I don't know where is it. This one is awful. This one, everyone should hate. But also I collected some cute ones that can practice and draw. Uh, and ones with the personality, like, look how much personality. And if you really don't wanna draw them, I had some options here too. But I'm drawing crabs, not really bugs, but crabs, because they're interesting, uh, with the mechanics. It looks like mechanical parts. Yeah, that's why we're drawing bugs. It's smogus, smogus, Jaden, we didn't do the proper smogus stream.
I know. I only realized like last week. But that's okay. We would have, we would have finished it late anyway. We always do. It's fine. Uh, yeah, Alex, I, I'm trying to find what it was that you said that upset the chatbot, but I can't find the log for it.
It says to me. Ah, he said, okay, you, you said the shortened version of, um, maybe? I cannot do anything about it. It usually gives me an option to allow it.
Yeah, normally does for me too, but it didn't this time, so. Well, watch your language, Alex. Or the bot will be angry at you.
Christina is the bot.
Yeah. Um... Shroy said, this looks great. I'll have to re-watch the stream more closely again. I'm working. Because I really love how it's looking. Yeah, it'll be on YouTube straight after this, so...
I don't like it that much, but okay, thank you. It's tricky to do. I mean, it's interesting to do all these colors. I want to draw this, uh, but this I need to... The, the coloring, the transition from deep, is this vermilion? Oh, darker than vermilion. Uh, it goes bit of purple, uh, then brighter, desaturated for the shine, then it goes more to flame oranges and then to yellows and then finally to really desaturated bright blues. This is really nice transition. Just doing this claw is nice. But doing just the study of the claw is not that interesting, I guess. So we are doing the whole crab. This one, but that one is in weird lightning, so that's why it's dark. And I'm then looking at the, the neighboring ones.
Uh, Alex said, well, nobody asked you, Melissa. The crab looks nice.
I wanna complain. I've been, Jaden complains.
I do complain. I complain and I'm good at it.
Uh, I, I was the guy on YouTube who did, um, had compassion for the lobsters in a store, so he went, he bought a lobster and put it in tank and it's beautiful.
Yeah, I saw that. And that's when, after watching, after watching that for a few episodes, I realized that, that's what I realized creeps me out about crabs and lobsters, the mouth thing. Because not only do they have like a million things going on, they'll also just punch you with these little like little fists by their mouth.
I wouldn't hold a crab, yeah, on, on my palm of the hand.
No, I don't know if I would either.
Too many moving parts.
Mm-mm.
The frogs, I, I can hold frogs, but the moment you hold the frog, you will realize it's, it doesn't have like torso as with us. It's much more flexible and it's trying to scope out on every side and moving every muscle and it's weird feeling too. Imagine the crabs with so many legs.
Ew. No, thanks. I'm good.
It would be, it would be much less, uh, uh, repulsive if it make sounds like Mr. Krabs, like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's like. Yeah, that would be, that would be nice.
And KKKK sounds.
Yeah. Uh... Next time, you should draw one of your birds or reimagine one of them. Man.
I wanna draw my dog, actually, um.
Yeah.
Some point.
Yeah, we could do that.
It doesn't have to be on stream. I, I don't know how much in, interesting it is.
I think people just like to see you, like to see you, uh, paint, to be honest, so...
Yeah, but I like to do it on, on my own.
Yeah, that's fair.
And nobody, nobody is watching.
Nobody's judging.
Not just judging, watching in general.
Hmm.
What else is shining here? This leg? This here? This one doesn't, but it could.
Uh, Alex said, I'd go so far as to say that I like your crab more than your dragons.
Alex is just hurtful.
Yeah.
He's offensive.
Yeah. Yeah. Although, I feel like he meant that more as a compliment than he did as an insult, honestly.
It's backhanded compliment.
Yeah. For the crying face.
I like all of Alex's art, not his comments though.
Just not his comments. It's okay, Alex. I don't, I don't know how to support you, but it's okay. They're there. It's okay.
No, your support by saying I say, say the same things to you.
I'll go back to my, I'll go to my room and cry for a little bit. I'll be back. Okay, or don't be too long, because the stream ends in like ten minutes, so... I'm still looking to see what he said, but I literally can't, there's no log of it anywhere.
I can send you screenshot later.
Yeah.
If I don't close the stream. Did it disappear?
No, it should be fine.
Okay, I found it. But I don't wanna play the screenshot now, because everything will freeze.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Saying that, Alex should be on the, Alex should be on the stream tomorrow. So.
So he can, he can playback.
Yeah. Yeah, eleven, eleven AM though. It's a, it's a morning, it's a morning stream.
Literally.
Hmm. Yeah, I thought we'd try it out.
Okay.
See how it goes.
Oh, I took another work tomorrow to prepare.
Yes, Alex, tomorrow.
I'll be preparing for a trip, but I will try to remember to play it.
Yeah. If you can't do tomorrow, Alex, then we will, we will move it, but.
Playing with the bright colors next to each other is nice on the crab.
Hmm.
See, now would I, uh, I would turn off the lines or paint over them because lines are stopping so much work to and colors, making them a bit muddy. So I would make the new layer, make sure to not merge this one too early and then paint over it. And then we also can do this mess here.
Oh, yeah.
By grouping it.
All of those weird, uh, weird hip joint things.
Yeah, bit like a scale. I, I don't know.
Yeah. I like all of the, I like all of the dots on the, on the legs in the reference image.
Yeah, I need to paint them, yeah. Good for reminding. It's nice catching, catching them in the Coral Island when you go, um, water and you catch them all.
Yeah. Yeah. I did that thing where I took a break from playing Coral Island and then I came back to it after like a month or two and I'm like, I have no idea what I was doing.
Yeah, I didn't play for like past ten days or so.
Yeah, it's, it's not good. Uh, so tomorrow, sorry I stood up. Yes, Alex, tomorrow. It's in the Google Calendar. We spoke about it like last week, I think. Uh. Melissa, do you experiment with brushes that have color dynamics turned on?
Uh, no.
What is color dynamics?
You can mix, like, um, see this is background, this is foreground color. And you have, if you have brush with color dynamics, you can mix those and you can determine how much of the is, do you say jitter? Um. Range, you wanna have mix between saturation, lightning and color.
Okay.
And, um, you can, uh, broaden range or shorten range and it looks nice. The thing is, I like to color pick a lot and it, it would make it a bit madder, muddy for how I work. But I see many people use it. It looks nice. It's just that it's my personal preference.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's nice when you're trying to establish color. Look how different all the legs are. This two needs to be the same.
Fine, you said you were gonna, you said you were gonna, uh, stylize it a little bit. It's, it's fine.
It's like clown crab.
Mm-hmm. My favorite, my favorite type of crab.
Do you like clowns?
Um. I'm not scared of them. Like, I, I know a lot of people get really uncomfortable around clowns, but I don't really.
I don't see anything appealing about it, anything fun, nothing.
I wouldn't say that I find them appealing or fun, but I don't find them scary at all. Like, they're just.
But they're supposed to be entertained by them.
Yeah, I don't know where, I don't know where or when that started because I can't imagine them ever being very entertaining.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They, they failed their job.
Yeah. Oh, God, Alex. So for me, I'm like a clown artist. Okay.
Why he always shoots himself?
Yeah. You're a very good artist, Alex. Uh, I mean, they eat dead animals? What, crabs or clowns?
Clowns.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, clowns eat dead animals? I mean, they probably do. Unless they're vegetarian. Yeah, as Alex says, unless they're vegetarians, they probably do. I always find clowns like interesting because you get the clowns that are there with the makeup that makes it look like they're crying or whatever. And it's like, your whole job is to be fun and entertaining and yet you chose makeup that makes you look depressed. Like, what, what the hell? I thought you were talking about crabs. Well, yeah, we're kind of flicking back and forth.
Uh, yeah, I think crabs do eat dead animals, yeah.
Yeah.
The crayfish, I had more experience with the crayfish. They also like, I think, dead fish.
Yeah. Well, crabs will eat like pretty much anything. There was a guy who lived upstairs, uh, in the flat above me when I was at university and his crab would eat like all the vegetables and stuff that he didn't, that he didn't want. Uh, oh, hey, Marco. Marco said I came in just at the last second to witness this little shiny dude. Yeah. It's very cute.
Without his rock because we don't wanna, we don't wanna draw rocks.
We don't, we don't, we don't like rocks. We're not here for the rock. Jaden's not that shiny.
One stream we're gonna draw just rocks because, and pebbles, because I like those.
You just said you don't want, you said earlier you don't like drawing rocks.
This one on the, on this one, I, we don't have time for this, but the pebbles, you know when pebbles in the river, on the bank of the river or small stream, those ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm down with that. I'm down with that. Yeah, I've got a spot in September with your name on it, Melissa. So maybe we could do it then.
Every time I think I did my, I did my depth or something, but I have.
Never.
You put me for the next.
It never ends. It keeps going and going and going.
It's easier if I lie to myself.
Yeah. Do you not like the time that we spend together here, Melissa?
Well, it's that I'm being bored, the thing that makes it double, double harder.
Okay, what if we, what if we just stopped streaming then? You know, we just hung out for two hours.
That would be lie, then I would say things maybe that are not for streaming and there is not chatbot that would stop that.
Uh.
He doesn't have it.
You go ahead. What'd you say?
No, I'm just starting to add stuff that doesn't, don't take me.
Doesn't exist. Just give him some horns or like.
Yeah, I, I started with the crest here, see?
Yeah.
And then we can give him.
Just slowly turn him into a dragon.
We can do, we can do the mustache.
Yeah. He's so dignified.
Why they don't have mustache? The, the lobster have them.
It's just that, you know, they evolved to get rid of it. Give him a little alien tail, like the face hugger. Oh, you know what, you know what? Crabs are the worst. It, the, what they call it? The coconut crabs? Those things are terrifying.
Yeah.
I hate those. Um. Sheroy said, do you normally use one brush for all the illustration or different brushes depending on the texture you're looking for?
Like three brushes.
Yeah. You can't really see it behind my camera. Hold on. Behind my camera, there's the little brush thing.
I use this one, this one, this one for drawing and this one. I think that's all.
Yeah.
Most of the time, that's all.
Yeah. Um, bug dragon, that would be cool.
Yeah, that's why we started this stream, but then I'm like, I don't feel like inventing the dragon on the stream from the bug. It can be done, but it will take me more.
Yeah. But.
From which one we would take? Maybe this, this is good head.
Yeah.
From a rhino beetle.
If you guys wanna make a bug dragon, then I would love to see that.
This is, this is already scary enough. You can put this in a Dark Souls game like.
Yeah.
Look, look at this.
It's.
The thing.
Yeah, it's.
Um, the, the bug leaves, they are also really nice to draw.
Hmm.
Leaf box, how it says. And this one is pink. You have many colors on the praying mantis and their decorations. I just didn't find on this side.
When, when I was in high school, one of my science teachers had pet stick insects that she would keep in the classroom. And I always wondered why, cause stick insects are just really lame. Half the time you don't even know where they are because they look like sticks.
Yeah, they put the legs, uh, in front and the back and they look like a stick, but what does it eat?
Uh, I think it just eats, I think it just ate like leaves and stuff. I don't think it really did anything. I remember when one of them was gonna die, she put it in the freezer.
To put the hibernation?
I guess. I didn't really ask. Um. Those things are terrifying. They eat everything and while it's alive and slowly. What? No, they're awesome. They're just sticks. They're just bugs that look like sticks. I'm sorry, but that, I don't, I just don't get it. Um, thank you, Fax, and thank you, Sheroy, for the hydrate and pasta check. I actually run out of water, but, um, but thank you. Um, they're little guys. Yeah, they are little guys, but they're also like kind of boring. But they're a bug that isn't scary, so that, that kind of works out.
It is, it is awful because you don't know that you stepped or touched, uh, you think it's twig and then it starts moving. Nothing more terrifies than that. I would rather see something that's red and, and have like scorp- eh, oh, I didn't put scorpions. Scorpions are really good for drawing, I forgot. Especially like under, um, how you say, the UV light.
Yeah, yeah, UV, UV light.
They look blue, real blue.
Yeah.
They, they, they would be nice. I forgot about them. They also can be trick. I would rather see a really red scorpion than thinking that's a twig. And then take it.
Yeah, but at least like the scorpion will sting you, whereas a stick insect will just keep pretending it's a stick.
I will get heart attack if it starts moving.
But the whole point is that they don't because they're a stick insect, so if they feel threatened, they just, they just still pretend that they're sticks.
I'm making fire. I put it in a fire. It starts moving.
That's not your problem then, because it's dead or it's, it's gonna be burnt, burnt to death.
So I, I, I'm amazed how I didn't scratch myself more during this stream because I usually, when I look at bu- bugs, dog bugs, I start scratching myself.
I had, I've had a couple of like shivers down my spine, mostly whenever, mostly when you showed the spider bits. I just was like, ugh.
But, okay, I just picked the nice ones. You don't like this one? How about white? White one is good. Look, look how cool it got the eyes.
Nothing, doesn't need that many eyes.
That's true, that's true, but, okay, what about yellow one? This looks fruity.
That, that means something different, but yeah.
Okay, it looks like a fruit because you would find it on a fruit or.
Yeah. Sure.
Okay, this one you said you don't like. Fine.
Yeah.
Uh, in, many times you would have, find a green spider on a green, yellow, something yellow and so on.
Hmm.
I mean, not that much colors. There is something red that looks like a spider, but it's a mite.
No.
And it, it was so many, like thi- this red, maybe even redder. Like this. And there were so many of them on our, all the stairs outside.